Board, it's 7:01 PM on Monday, January 13th, 2014. We're in the administration building boardroom on the lower level. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee, here. Mr. Gerroz?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Excused.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Excused.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Here. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there any comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion or action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee. Thank you, Mrs. Randall, for the second. The check register is here at the front for public examination. Is there any Board discussion on the consent agenda? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing no comment, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Gerroz?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Action items, business services, capital project recommendations. Mr. Gerroz, please read the motion.
Thank you. It is recommended that the School Board approve and place on file the 2014-15 Capital Projects Recommendations that were proposed and reviewed at the December 9th, 2013 meeting. Individual projects will be approved by the School Board throughout the year, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee. Is there any Board discussion? Dr. Erdl, is there anything you'd like to highlight from the capital projects list for the public this evening?
Well, I'd like to reiterate the point I made at the last meeting, that the TIF that'll be retired and the proceeds of that TIF will be to the other taxing entities, including the school district, and the amount of money that we'll be receiving, my understanding is somewhere in the neighborhood between $2 and $4 million. When we look at our capital project list, we can see that runs somewhere in the neighborhood of at least $20 to $30 million, and that's not even what it could be if we really went deeper with that list. So when we find out the amount that that'll be coming, the amount that'll be coming to the school district, we'll be coming forward with some discussion items and some recommendations to put a significant amount of that money toward facilities upgrades.
Well, thank you, Dr. Erdl. Another chance for Board comment or questions? Mrs. Randall?
Just a clarification of what you just said. Dr. Erdl, are you talking about items that did not appear on the plan that we approved or that we talked about at the last meeting?
No, I think it would be from items that are on that list.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to comment that we are continuing our philosophy of maintaining our facilities as we go. So this is a significant amount of money that's being set aside every year for ongoing, not maintenance, but capital repairs to our buildings. So with that said, is there any public comment on the capital projects recommendations? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Gerroz?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Human resources, Board policy revisions. Mrs. Rios, please read the motion.
School Board Policy 3430.01 and Bylaw 0100 revisions. It's recommended that the School Board approve the revisions to Policy 3430.01, employment, family and medical leave of absence, and Bylaw 0100 definitions as presented and discussed at the December 9th, 2013 meeting, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Is there any Board comment or question? Seeing none, is there any community comment? No, seeing no community comment, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Gerroz?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Human resources, Dr. Erdl, can you present the first item, which is the school calendar for 2014-15 proposal?
Thank you. Mr. Chanon is going to walk through some of the specifics of the school calendar that we're recommending this evening. This calendar is a result of a number of different collaborative processes. Probably most prominently was our work with the Superintendent Advisory Committee on the calendar and looking at different options. They ultimately took that back to the buildings to get feedback on it and brought this forward. It's a calendar very similar to this current year, but for the 2014-15 school year lined up with a couple of changes, and Mr. Chanon will explain those.
Sure. What you see in front of you is very consistent with school calendars that we've had in the past, with a couple of exceptions. You'll notice that in August, we have a third in-service day, and really what we're looking at doing is keeping the same amount of in-service and teacher workdays throughout the school year, but being sensitive to the concern of both teachers and the community that our school year not go into the third week of June. And so we did move one day into August, and we initially moved two days into August, but staff feedback and talking to other staff members was such that it really created very long months without an opportunity to come together as a staff and kind of have staff development kind of embedded throughout the school year. So we did move one of those first days back into the school year. You'll see that we returned in terms of a spring break schedule to one that we followed for many, many years, with the exception of last year, with the April 3rd being Good Friday and Easter week, the following week. That is our traditional spring break, and I would say the majority of school districts in the area, although not all, are following a similar spring break pattern, so we're returning to that as well. You'll see that the February in-service day is, has been moved. That's the one that we opted to have at the beginning of the school year, so that we were keeping our March, December, and January workdays, which line up with grading period changes. So where there's a grading period, a trimester break for elementary, that provides a day for grading and work, and secondary schools' in-service days, and the reverse would be true in January at the semester break. As in years past, we've created a potential four-day weekend in May with the possibility of a snow makeup day around Memorial Day weekend. Obviously, this year, we'll be in school for that four-day weekend, but we can always hope.
A minor point of correction, a polar vortex makeup day.
Yes, a polar vortex makeup day. One thing to note on this calendar is that the, we did do some shifting around of the in-service days, and that actually results in the last day of class being June 12th. And when this comes back for the Board for approval, that'll be noted. And the last day for teachers would then be June 15th. The only other variation in this calendar is that it is a 193 workday calendar, as opposed to 192 workdays. When we eliminated half-days from our schedule, it did result in an additional workday. To balance the contract year, and that was two years ago, to balance the number of days, we removed one of the conference compensation days, which is a triangle on the calendar. It didn't impact the days we were off school or the days that teachers were not required to attend, but there was a lot of feedback that the teachers liked that day to be designated on the calendar. So as a result, you'll see two triangles on your calendar, one on April 3rd and one on November 26th, both of which would be off regardless of whether there's a triangle there, but it does result in there being 193 contract days. And that was really due to the overwhelming staff feedback that they were more comfortable those being designated that way, and so that's the calendar.
Mrs. Rios?
Can you go back to you mentioned in August, there was an extra, right in the beginning, you said there's an extra teacher workday that, is that that 26th through 28th?
Correct. As part of that, that would typically, we would have an in-service day in February, but the problem with leaving the in-service day in February is that it tended to push the last day, student day, wouldn't be the 12th, it would be Monday, the 15th, and that just got to be a little long.
So it's not an extra day, it's just the changing of the February to the?
Exactly. So, yeah, you don't see it there, and otherwise, our school year would go into the third week of June.
Okay, thank you. And there's one, you said it went from 192-day to 193-day?
Correct.
Last year's calendar?
Was 192.
And how about the year before? Because wasn't there?
By the year before, 192, I believe, for the last two years running? Yeah.
Okay.
So, and that really is a result of that, that triangle on November 26th or that triangle on April 3rd, their days were not in school, the teachers don't report, and the students don't report. Last year, there was only one triangle. The triangle counts as a day worked. We could make that next, and it would still be 192. There was only one triangle on last year's calendar, so we could make it 192. Really, it was response to?
No, I, thank you. I remember.
It is odd.
I remember we had this discussion.
And it really is, it really is a result of the decision not to have half-days, and so it doesn't, it's not the result of this year's calendar, it's really the result of two-years-ago calendars, when we eliminated half-days and wanted to keep the same number of student contact days, but also the same amount of staff development time during the year.
Well, thank you. Is there any other Board comment? Mrs. Randall?
The triangle discussion, again, we had last year, and from teachers' perspective, I believe that there was some discussion that the result was they were not getting monetary compensation for conferences.
I mean, they're paid an annual salary, they're professional staff, they're paid a salary for all hours worked. The reality is, is by putting in that triangle, it just divides their salary by a larger number. The contract days, you have to really keep in mind, they have varied from 193 to 191 over the course of a decade, and it really depends on how you count them. When you look at comparable school districts, most school districts have fewer days worked. That's because they don't have conference compensation days or holidays in their calendar. So our calendar lines up very comparably with other school districts, but you have to recall that there are three holidays and two conference compensation days. It's five days out of 193. So that puts us at 188 when you're comparing apples to apples, and most school districts are about 189. So it really is a matter of comfort, rather than a matter of any impact on salary or any impact on actual days worked.
So perhaps a suggestion is not call them a conference compensation day?
We could, the other way to go would be to eliminate them all.
I understand, I totally understand the bottom line, but I know that we had extensive discussion about this, and can we simplify it?
We can simplify by going to 191 days and eliminate conference compensation days. Part of the discussion I have over and over about conference compensation is, and it relates to when we first put the handbook together, and we didn't put start and end times for teachers. It's do your job.
Right.
You know, it doesn't matter when you come, when you go, as long as you can do your job and do it effectively and do it extremely well. We want the best people. It doesn't matter when you're working, but that also, there's give and take to that. Sometimes you have an appointment, you need to leave, whatever it might be. On the opposite side, there's also evenings, and we know teachers work at home, we understand that. But with trying to move it into more of a, be recognized as a true profession, that's why we didn't put start and end times. And that's why, when we look at conference compensation, to move away from that and just say, no, these nights you have conferences. Granted, we understand, they're long nights and they're, they take a lot of time, but try to move in that direction. This recommendation on the calendar isn't doing what I'm saying. It's saying, let's not, let's not take the time that we have debating that issue back and forth. Let's get a calendar put in. It accommodates those concerns, and it just, it moves us forward and has a calendar that parents and kids will know when they show up. So that, that's kind of the discussion that's ongoing about those days.
I understand, I agree. I think the HR committee was involved in that. So they are in school on the triangle days?
No. Nobody's in school.
The day's off. No, I think no matter how we did this calendar, our traditional spring break, if it falls on a Good Friday, we have Good Friday off, and that is a result of the old collective bargaining agreement with Local 1561 that required it. But that Good Friday was always off, and then through the week following Easter was traditional. And for many years now, especially since we've done away with the half-day, we've been out of school the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and I think that's been very popular, both with staff and also with the community. It's nice to prepare for Thanksgiving. I don't think we would be in school either way. It's just a matter of whether that's an X or a triangle, and whether you count the X or the triangle, but to students, they're out, and to teachers, they're out. It's really, it is really purely a matter of comfort, whether they're or not.
I, I agree, and I understand. I just, maybe we can change the wording next time.
We could be the first district to go to year-round schooling, and we can eliminate the whole conversation.
Well, that too. Yeah.
I don't mean it to be confusing.
I'm not joking either. I think it would be really a good idea to change the language next year, next time around.
I think next time around, you should do that.
However, thinking about the future, five, six years from now, if we stop calling it a conference compensation day, somebody's come to the micro, going to come to the microphone and say, can we have, we should be compensated for evening conferences. If we continue to make it explicitly called out that that's what the day is for, then no one will forget. I'm amazed at how an institution's historical memory quickly fades, just to be devil's advocate here.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Rios.
One more question. You, when this was presented in the buildings, was there any feedback that is worthwhile sharing from the staff?
Sure, I mean, I can share with you a little bit about what got modified. Originally, there were four days up front in August, and part of the shifting around of those, those days in August was that feedback about the long break that would have resulted if we had pulled the October Staff Development Day. So that was put back in and then removed in front of the year. The other set of feedback was that question of, well, where is that other triangle? So again, that triangle was added back in. You know, the most contentious part, and the only part that we have been collecting feedback on kind of ongoing, is that question of quite how to deal with the dates of conferences, and you may see some shifting come back from that. I think the problem is there is no, there is no clear best way to handle conferences in terms of whether it's two in a week or two weeks, a week apart for each of those nights. Every time we switch them, we get the opposite feedback. It really is, calendars are a 50/50 draw when you start asking staff. So we get a lot of contrary feedback, but that was some of the feedback that we received from staff and specifically incorporated. And again, that real emphasis in trying to make sure that students were out no later than the second week of June.
Just one more comment, I think with the calendar, there's, there's one group that's missing on feedback on the calendar, and that's our customers, our parents and our students. And for next, next year, we need to find a way to get some feedback for those that we're servicing, instead of having it set up for us as employees and what fits us best. So we need a loop in there to include parents and students.
Now, that said, there were comments regarding the current year calendar from, comments from parents, and those were taken into account when you architected this calendar, is that?
Correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Any other Board comment? Any community comment? Thank you, Mr. Chanon. So next, we will move to Superintendent Reports, New Learning Environments, the Virtual Academy, presented by Mr. Mahoney.
I haven't heard anything about this. Dennis, please introduce your colleagues when you're ready.
Tonight, we'll be talking about primarily the different parts of our virtual school, Wauwatosa Virtual Academy. With me tonight is Amy Harrington and Teresa Schubus. Lord, we recall, last time we came, about this time last year or so, Amy and Teresa were very much a part of the kind of the internal aspects, and as we've then started to go statewide, they've kind of grown with the Virtual Academy. So let me just begin. Amy, don't want to sit here, you'd rather sit back there. Probably a smart move. What we have here is how it works, and what I wanted to do is just remind, I'm sure the Board knows it well, but for people in the audience that may wonder, how does a virtual school work within the setting of the Wauwatosa School District? Our Virtual Academy, Wauwatosa Virtual Academy, we use, we allow students to access their courses from the comfort of their own homes and not matter anywhere in the state. We do say it's a no-cost, and I think that the Board understands what a lot of people don't understand, what does that mean? Typically, when we say no-cost, it's offered to our parents and students at no cost. There's obviously an expense in doing this, but most of that is used, a lot of that's used through open enrollment and other things that we're able to do within the district to make this service available to our students. Everything is online. It works just like a traditional high school, except everything is online. Students can log in and access courses from home, public library, anywhere that is, there's a computer and internet access. Teacher-supported learning, I don't know if the Board knew this the last time, so we wanted to make sure that we let everyone, let you know that it's Wisconsin-certified teachers that are, basically, it's an on-demand kind of a deal, either through the phone, email, instant messaging. Teachers are available for one-on-one instruction between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, as well as a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week tutoring, additional assistance. We even have 24-hour, seven-day-a-week consulting for technical difficulties at the. Our teachers have a virtual online whiteboard, which can also help in visually explaining There is a real, I feel, a very strong commitment to students' success, and I hope that you'll see that tonight, but we are committed to other students. We have online student achievement coordinators, online counselors, online teacher support. We also have, of course, local support. Teresa and Amy provide the local teacher and local counselor support. And we'll give you a little update now as to where we're at. Online courses, if you recall, going back a time probably more than 18 months ago, Beth Ehrenberger helped us kind of draft an understanding and arrangement between the Board and ourselves as the kind of students that we would probably aim our assistance towards. So typically, the students that we help part-time within Wauwatosa and sometimes full-time would be students that have a curricular need, it's not available in our established curriculum framework, and is necessary to maintain student learning development, students' learning. The other thing, there's, there's about five things here. A student has a documented medical or health need. Going way back, originally, the idea kind of came actually between Dr. Erdl and helping me with a problem at Children's Hospital, and out of that discussion, this whole thing kind of flourished. But we certainly have students in the district that have severe medical issues, and the virtual school helps them, obviously, because they can work at different times of the day or night, and they have support. Building level, they have an IEP 504 or RTI team that they've indicated they need the support of an academic or behavioral plan, and we can fall into that. Typically, that's part-time assistance. A Wauwatosa resident has submitted an open enrollment application to a virtual school outside of the district. We'll talk about that tonight, but that actually has happened quite a bit this year, where parents were looking for outside help through open enrollment, not realizing that we have a program right here in Tulsa. Other extenuating circumstances that require district or office administrative approval, sometimes in lieu of expulsion, things of that nature. And right now, Amy is going to talk a little bit about the part-time and full-time student progress that we've made.
Okay. So currently?
You have to use the microphone.
Currently, we have 32 students to date that are enrolled at 612. I think Mr. Mahoney referenced high school before, but we are a 612 program. An example of, I just kind of broke down some of the categories of students. We currently have four fifth-year seniors, so super seniors, so to speak, that are enrolled in part-time virtual classes. Two have recently just completed their courses within the past couple of weeks and will graduate. Very exciting, and their parents are really excited. Three students currently taking courses in lieu of expulsion. We keep in touch with these students. All three are in good academic standing in their online classes currently, so that's really positive. Five of our part-time students have special education needs. Two have 504 plans. We currently have six courses, six students, rather, taking AP Calculus/BC course, which was canceled at Wauwatosa West last year because there was low enrollment. So these kids were all able to take that course. And we have five students who are identified as GNT, and then we have seven students taking courses for other reasons, so credit recovery or the course didn't fit in their schedule. These are full, so I really want to categorize three. So we have part-time Wauwatosa students, we have full-time open enrollment students, and then we have full-time Wauwatosa students. Currently, our open enrollment numbers are, we're at 28. We started out the year, I think, close to 20, and we've been continuing to add students. Of those students, 22 are, you know, their academic progress is on target, they're going to pass their classes at their due date, which is the end of the first semester. We do have six students who have low academic progress, meaning they're not going to pass all their classes in the allotted time. We currently have five new open enrollment exception applications that have been approved, so those kids are just in the registration process to go into the online program. So that'll bump our numbers up. And then we have four open enrollment exception applications that are currently being processed or pending. Of the full-time Wauwatosa students, we currently have 21. 10 of these students initially opened and enrolled outside of the district, so we were glad that we were able to retain them. Of those students, 15 are on, you know, making good progress. We do have six students who are not making adequate progress. We've met with those families, started the discussion that the students will transition back to their home district school, because this format of learning is not working for them. And then we currently have four families who've completed applications, who have expressed interest in attending the online school.
Communication log. Teresa, do you want to talk about that, or would you like?
I can.
Go ahead.
Okay. In our program, there's, or in the program, our kids can talk to a student achievement coordinator, a counselor, a teacher, they have many people to talk to online. If you look, between September 8th and January 8th, there was a total of 5,653 communications between our students and one of these three. between our students and one of these three people. So, there's a lot of communication going on, so they're not falling through the cracks. There's someone always talking to them. If they're falling behind, the student achievement coordinator will call them. If there's something going on, the guidance counselor calls them. They talk to teachers if they're having problems. And also, our administrator, Dennis, talks to them. If they're really not listening to anybody, he'll get on the phone and ask what's going on. So, and the way they communicate are several ways. It's either by phone, by email, chat, which is an instant messaging. So, if they're having problems in a class, they talk to a teacher right away and they get help right away versus waiting for someone to get back to them. Discussion boards and face-to-face meetings. Okay, county grounds, and that's me. We have two programs going on. First, at the Detention Center, that's where I'm teaching right now. About a year ago, we started a new program called MCAP, which is called Milwaukee County Accountability Program. It's a program that came about mainly because we can now keep students in secured detention for 180 days. About a year or so ago, there was a new state law passed that they can stay by us for 180 days. So, we started, or not we, the county started that program.
Teresa, let me just interrupt just a second. I just wanted you to know, we've had some very, some interesting overlaps. Tom Wanta, who some of you know from Wauwatosa and other things, the rec leagues and things. There's Terrell Martin, James Ross, are some of the people that have helped essentially the judges out there, where seeing kids coming and going, coming and going, and not making any progress during an extended long period of time. And they looked at all of our programs and the recovery that we were experimenting with. Plank Road experimenting with it there, and the concept came together, why not do this? It's very unusual what they've put together. I think it's actually something that, you know, one of those things that you probably haven't heard a lot of, but really should be proud of because it's actually a place where kids aren't allowed just to not do anything. They have to move forward. Risa has been instrumental. You'll see some of the statistics in a minute. Oh, I'll go ahead.
Okay. So, these kids stay with me for now, a minimum of 180 days because just recently, they have also set, passed law now that they can stay up to 360 days. So, I can have kids in there for a full year if the judge so deems that they need to stay there. These kids are usually kids that would have been sent to Lincoln Hills, which is the state-run Corrections for Juveniles. So, instead of sending them up to Lincoln Hills, they are keeping them down here, closer to their family, closer to the community that they live in, giving them all kinds of support and all kinds of help. I did pass out a copy of the brochure, if you're interested, and to see what these kids have to go through. Besides education, there's a JCIP training, which is trying to change their criminal mindset to make better choices. They also have family counseling that hopefully helps the family or the parents try to parent better and to control their kids. So, they have a lot of things going on, but education is, is pretty much key. We're trying to get them, traditionally, these kids are kids that don't go to school, or if they do go to school, they're just in school to cause trouble or whatever. I'm trying to get them back interested in school, trying to get them some credits before they leave, so hopefully when they leave that they can see that they can do school and to hopefully get back into school and stay out of trouble. So, that's what MCAP is. At Plank Road, there's a program called FOCUS, which is basically the same thing, although the kids have not been in as much trouble as they have at MCAP. They are not typically, typically kids that would have been sent up to Lincoln Hills. They're just really troubled. They stay in FOCUS or at Plank Road in this program for three months. So, it's a little bit shorter. They do get some of the, some of the help that they need, some of the counseling. They don't get the JCIP training. They don't get some of the other stuff that the Detention Center kids get. But basically, they're there for a longer period of time. So, that's why we kind of did the virtual school with them because they're there for a period of time where they can finish, hopefully finish a class. And our emphasis is on credit recovery there. So, for this year, right now, FOCUS has five students that are taking classes and they're in a total of six classes. Three of them are still in progress. One class has been successfully completed and one kid has been withdrawn to inappropriate internet use. So, he's no longer in the program. And I should say, FOCUS has, can have up to 30 kids at one time. Right now, they have 18. Five of them are deemed worthy to take the internet classes because they have to have about a sixth-grade reading level. So, if they have a sixth-grade reading level and they want to take classes, we, they allow them to take classes. Okay, so right now, we have five kids, like, well, one has been kicked out. So, we have four kids that are taking internet classes or online classes. MCAP, I presently have 10 students that are in a total of 17 classes. Most of my kids in MCAP take two classes. They'll take one with me in the morning. I'm up there for almost two hours. Then they take one in the afternoon with another teacher. It's usually a math class. Okay, so we have 17 classes going right now. 10 are still in progress. Six of them have been successfully completed. And one kid was withdrawn totally from MCAP, so he's out of the mix. I took him out of the program because now he's back in, down in general population in DT. He's no longer in MCAP. So, I took him out of the program. But what I think is more impressive is my, not mine, but the statistics from last year with MCAP. I had just started it. We didn't have, the kids weren't in as many classes, but I had 14 kids enrolled in a total of 20 classes last year. They passed 16 classes, which I think was pretty good. We withdrew one because he was on an inappropriate internet site and I was not going to deal with that. I had three failures. Two of them, however, were due to their time up in Detention Center. They went home. They were allowed to or could have continued at home, but for various reasons, they did not. And then I had one that just out and out failed the class, was not interested in doing it and just failed. Of those 14 kids, I had a total of five in middle school. Three of them earned or completed one course. Two of them completed two courses. And then of my high school kids, I had three who earned half a credit, so that was one class they completed. Three of them who earned one credit, and then three who did not earn any credits. So, I think in the Detention Center with the kids or, and in FOCUS, we're having some pretty good success. I'm up there, though, really pounding at them to make them do their work and get them to do their work, but they're doing it and it's, they enjoy it. So, it's going well with them.
What we hope to share with the board tonight is that we see and sense that the program is continuing to grow. I think most of our success is coming word of mouth. I don't know that we've heard the, that it's marked, that we're in the process of learning that, so that we option known to more students. But we, again, I don't know if we did adequate to what's happening, but it is a wonderful thing to see a student, which they have, have to go back to their schooling and actually be in a better position to graduate than they would have otherwise. It's great to, as we had a student the other day, last Thursday, we found out that her father had called and said, could you just hang with her? And she ended up graduating. Class she needed, and she is going to graduate. This is one that wouldn't have graduated from our area, probably or possibly, and one of those, a big victory. Anything else, Dan?
Yeah, well, thank you. Is there any board question or comment, Mrs. Randolph?
Can you remind me, please, Dennis, how kids arrive at Plank Road School?
What typically happens is when a student is arrested, they first go to Detention Center. They have a certain period of time, the judge has to have an initial hearing with them, that typically is right away, within the first 24 hours. Then, they'll have some type of a dispensation meeting, and that can be within five to seven days. And then, at that point, from the Detention Center, a lot of things happen. Some kids can stay longer because the case is more difficult or there's other pieces to it sometime, and I won't get to all of those, we don't have time. But that is why some of the kids might stay at Detention longer. Other students will then be placed at a variety of residential centers, potential places. One of them is St. Charles that owns or operates the, in FOCUS program over at, where, you know, we think of it on our side, is Tom Seidel and the group over at...
Plank Road.
Plank Road, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
But at Plank Road. But in reality, where they stay at night, when we talk about FOCUS, that's where they're staying at night. Or they're staying, if they're not in FOCUS, there was another program that is out there. And then Tom sees those students during the day. And that is, as Teresa said, about three, two to three-month stay, sometimes shorter. There are some real short-term kids that are out there as well, that sometimes are just for sanctions or other things that they do with that. Sometimes our program, as I said, MCAP's a rarity because it's students that just will not seem, they're falling through the cracks. And this is Milwaukee County, so it's a fairly large area to fall in the cracks. So, we're excited because you can start today, do your regular schooling, then you have Mrs. Shumuski to add on some credit recovery, and then in the evening, you have Mrs. Salentine to make sure that you have ample reading so that you read your 40 books in time. So, when they come out, we think we're pushing for yard.
Now, with or without the online school, we'd be serving these kids?
Yes.
Right.
The online is just another service we provide.
Right.
The goal is, is when you send them back, if you send them back no better than how you receive them. What have you done? And our goal is, is if nothing else, you know, that's where our hope with MCAP is, is that if they do return home, some of them won't, but if they do, they're in a better position to be successful than they were when they were doorstep. And A, through the credit recovery portion, helps us through that.
The other thing that's good about that is there's kids up there from seventh grade to 11th grade with varied skills and stuff. And right now, I'm the only teacher up there. For me, I can have a total of 12 kids, right? And they just filled the program, so I have 12 kids up there with all different kinds of levels. I have a couple of high school kids that are in third-grade reading level, so I'm trying to work intensely with them to try to get their reading level up. Then, at the same time, I'm working with them, I have kids on the online program that, for the most part, can work on their own. So, they're kind of doing their own stuff and getting an education where, which is, kind of frees me up to help the kids that really need some intense work. And like I said, I have middle school kids and I have high school kids. It's hard to try to teach both of them what they need. So, the online has been, right now, it's been a godsend.
And would you say that because of these particular situations, these schools, as opposed to a Wauwatosa student who just needs to have an advanced course or something, are we taking on more of the responsibility for facilitating the online learning? Because I know with our contract with, with the company that does the online learning, they provide the instructors and the guidance.
What I would say is this, that Dr. Erle had this concept available, and I think we've tried to really remain true to that, which is that, you know, our goal was never to, you know, this is a big dollar boon for the district. The hope was, is that in the money that was made in one area could assist us in all areas. And I really think the district, you know, that was their hope. And I think some of these programs, for example, some of the part-time kids were picking up. Honestly, I didn't see that would be as strong as it was. And some of the dollars, hopefully, that can be used if we're getting full-time situation, can assist them there and back and forth. And, you know, I don't know if that really answered it, but the reality is, is we're trying to be sensible with every nickel.
Yeah.
And do the best we can.
Yeah. No, I am really grateful that all three of you are there. As I said, I know we have these kids anyway, you know, and for them to have the longer opportunity there, I think is great. And if the tools of having the online courses makes it better or easier for you to help them succeed, that's, that's all good, so.
I think the county also is, there's a pat on the back for how they've allowed us to come in and to, you know, kind of work with them. And it's really one of those things where
Yeah.
We have two big groups that work together.
Yeah, and, and the Wanta that you mentioned, is he, yeah, is he the head of the center? Is he the county employee?
Yes, he, he is the director of the Health and Human Services. I don't have it in front of me to prove it out. But he essentially has been very Wauwatosa for, as long as I've been there, before I got out there. He actually wanted Wauwatosa, or precedes all of us.
Yeah, when I happened to go on a tour, I stopped in there and there was a tour going on for other superintendents, I think they called them, of these detention centers. And they were extremely impressed with everything. And, and one of the things that I remember him talking about was the student artwork in the halls, some amazing work, and that his predecessor didn't want that to happen. They, they wanted the separation of incarceration and education. And, and it was, it was really, really cool to see.
We've all went with the basic assumption that we, all Larry Malinowski's art is the only thing really important, as long as no one tells him, otherwise we'll...
Yeah, there's some really good stuff out there. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Vee?
Thank you. And thank you all for coming and for the report. It's very helpful to get this information and to get the hard numbers of what's going on. I'm glad to hear about the programs at the county grounds. I know that that was not the primary intent of this, but it sounds like it's been very beneficial for those students and for our staff who have a really hard job out there. So, thank you for that. You touched a little bit on what I wanted to ask about Mr. Mahoney, which was that my recollection of our initial discussions of this was that the open enrollment students would cover the costs so that our students could benefit from this as well. And I guess I'd like to back up a second. I'm also glad to hear that students whose classes are canceled for low enrollment are given the opportunity to take those. So, that's another plus. But anyway, my, my question is, is it working out as envisioned? Are we, do we have enough open enrollment students to cover the expenses, or is this a program which is adding to the budget of the district?
John could probably answer that, but I don't know if we'll know that completely till the end of the year. The other piece, we've kept it pretty tight on, on the part-time opener, or part-time resident kids taking classes. What I would like to see, where we get enough open enrollment, where we can just kind of open the gates and allow anybody for any class for any reason to be able to take classes and to be able to fund it through that. So, we anticipated or we were hoping for 100 students, I think maybe even more. But we started with what we thought was around 90-some students, but some of those people were filling those out just to get into the brick-and-mortar schools. So, John, if you can answer that at all?
I had it, I thought it about between 20 and 25 students, we break even. So, based on what, what they're showing here, I think we're going to come on a little bit ahead this year.
Okay, thank you.
Anything above that, we would be taking a...
Okay, thank you. And my other question is just displaying my own ignorance. I did not realize that we could take open enrollment students mid-year. Is that just for the virtual school?
I really am going to step into Teresa's, Teresa's area, so when I mess it up, she can explain it correctly. But there's been several changes that have happened. There, the one thing, there's one part of it that allows students from other districts to take two classes, which was new to us. And that has happened. It's been around for a bit, but new to us, and we implemented that. There also are, Amy, you told me today, eight now, I said seven, so I'll let you go ahead and tell that part.
I think it was June of 2010 is when the open enrollment exception application came out. And I should know these eight. There are eight reasons under which you can apply. If you've moved into the state, if your child's been bullied, if you believe it's in your child's best interest to change her. So, that's... So that's ongoing and open and fluid and, and goes year-round.
That's why we have these new numbers coming in right now, which really shouldn't be.
Right, I was not expecting to see new people mid-year, so thank you for the explanation, I appreciate it.
I think that, just a comment on that, the DPI is not, any, anytime there's an appeal filed by a school district, they will not overturn or they, they will not hear the appeal. Basically, they will say, parents have decided that this is in the best interest of the child and who else? How can a school district say no to that when they're already deciding? So people have tried to, um, deny those. So basically, it's an open door at any point in time for open enrollment throughout the school year.
Or online?
Well, it's.
For the brick and mortar as well.
Okay.
But typically, our open enrollment seats have been, have been full in the brick and mortar, so I think that's why we weren't really, seems new to us.
Yeah, for open enrollment, the law changed several years ago that you can apply anytime during the school year to a different district and it's extenuating circumstances. And then you have to justify your circumstances. If a student is a resident of Wauwautosa, what Dr. Erdl referenced, if one of our resident students applied to a different district, we would not have the opportunity to deny it. I mean, DPI wouldn't stand behind us. Um, but we have the authority for students that apply into our district. So we're looking at each applica- application, Amy and Dennis review them. Um, special education is a big factor with open enrollment, you know, looking at that. And right now, we don't have space, um, in special education for our students in the virtual school. We, um, there isn't any space available. But other than that, Amy and Dennis pretty much screen them and then we enroll them. So it's allowed for us to have a pretty fluid enrollment.
Thank you, it's good to learn something.
Any other board questions or comments? Are there any community questions or comments? Okay, well, it looks like you're done, thank you very much. So, Dr. Erdl, our next item is a review of the Wisconsin Association of School Board, um, convention resolutions. Uh, Mrs. Muftald will be our delegate. She's unable to attend tonight and she shared with me that she will abide by, not abide by, she will closely follow your recommendations, um, in accord with the discussion of the board tonight. So I'll let you take it away now as far as reviewing what your recommendations are on the key resolutions.
Thank you. The resolutions are developed by local school boards and submitted to the WASB where there's a committee of school board members from around the state that make a decision whether or not they move that forward to the delegate assembly, which is a representative from each school board in the state. And they meet next week here in Milwaukee. And they take votes and decide whether or not, and it becomes part of the lobbying and legislative advocacy, um, work of WASB, which is Wisconsin Association of School Boards. This by far is the smallest number of resolutions I've seen that they've put forward. And within that packet that you have, there's a number that were not forwarded. Um, the one from Beloit, special education students who have gone through the expulsion process was not forwarded. The two from Mount Harb, including a tax deduction for private school tuition and the voucher expansion, that was not forwarded because it did not fit within, um, the purpose of the delegate assembly. And then also the, the one from West Bend, where they were wanting a statewide law to say you have to disclose all of the financing and total cost of referenda, which I always thought most school districts and school boards did that anyway, but that one was not forwarded. Two of them that were forwarded forward, which I, I think, um, actually, all of them that are forwarded, I think are worthy of support. Two relate to the school calendar. The one from Toma that talks about starting after September one. And it says that, um, that school district should be able to start after September one in particular, if there's a consortium of school districts in an area that agree to a common calendar. Uh, we have this discussion every year, why can't the districts around southeastern Wisconsin agree to a calendar? And because every school district has their own individual holidays and needs. So I don't know that that'll ever happen around here. And the other one relates to numbers of days and hours and minutes and trying to allow more flexibility for the local level as far as instructional minutes. The one with the September one start date, there seems to be a bill proposed every single year that gets shot down. The tourism industry or lobbyists seem to have some pull. Um, they seem to always get that pulled out of committee or pulled out of, off of, uh, the process going forward to, to a law. But each year, people continue to try and I think it makes a lot of sense. We talk about our school calendar, we're not ending the third week in June if we're allowed to start. Where if you look at fifty-five percent of our students, which are students involved in co-curriculars or have already begun their school year, some of them three weeks before the school year starts, it would make sense that we start earlier. School bus seat belts, that's one requiring, um, we don't bus, but for those, uh, occasions for students with special education needs and different field trips and things like that, they're requiring new, uh, school buses to have seat belts. Weapon possession, that only SROs should have weapons. The one from Middleton Cross Plains went on a grove allowing for a, a waiver of the new ACT suite of testing to allow the students to take the explorer test in the end of eighth grade instead of the beginning of ninth grade, which they do that and they use that for decision-making and class placements for high school. And I think the more flexibility people have, the better it can be. So that really is the extent of all the resolutions.
So you'll be providing recommendations on these resolutions to Mrs. Muftald?
I would, unless.
From an administrative perspective or a management perspective?
Correct.
Unless the board has strong feelings, um, that we wish to voice tonight that you'd take into consideration?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any strong feelings on the board with respect to any of these items? In the past, we've trusted the judgment of the superintendent. Um, he will share these with the full board, um, prior to the convention. If there's any, um, how should I say this? If there's any disagreement with the recommendation of administration, then please communicate that to me. And, um, we will see whether there's, um, a need for perhaps a special meeting. I really doubt we'd do that, but, you know, just to have the basis covered, we'll say that. These have never been controversial in my memory on the board. Okay, all right. Is there any community comment?
Can I just make a request? And I think I, I do this every year, but, um, could we get, um, a presentation maybe from WASB that tells how successful these efforts are?
I can, no, yes.
You know, and, and I've asked Sharon, and it's not her job or her responsibility, um, but, you know, she described the process where if they're approved, you know, they go in this book and so on. But I'd really like to know, um, how effective the Wisconsin Association of School Boards organization.
Yeah, I think John Ashley coming in, I think it would be a good idea. Each year, you pay the dues.
Yep.
It'd be nice to see.
I was about to say, that comes in.
They're doing for you.
Are we getting something for our dues?
Well, yeah, and, and it's just would be interesting. And maybe if it's not effective and it's things we really think are important, we can find other ways to advocate or additional ways to advocate.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you. Any other comment or question from the board? Is there any community question or comment on the WASB resolutions? All right, thank you, Dr. Erdl. The, um, third item in the superintendent report is a, um, a draft of proposed amendments to the bylaw one fifty, subsection one fifty-two. And it really, it was authored by me, the board president, in an effort to provide some housekeeping or clarity on the nomination process. At our last board election session, there was some discussion as to how we would proceed with the nominations. And in my memory, it seems that we, due to the discussion, proceeded in a manner that was different from what had been our custom in, in previous years, in prior years. So rather than to go through that again, where we have that conversation here and we're having to make procedural decisions on the fly about how to proceed, I thought it a good idea to make the points of discussion explicitly stated as far as how the board would like to proceed. And I also added, um, yeah, and that matter had to do with whether we read the vote count on the nominations. If, um, um, a, a board member has, is nominated for a seat, do we just say they were nominated or do we say how many votes they received in the nomination? Typically, we had read the count. Last year, we did not read the count. Uh, also, Dr. Erdl mentioned to me that he had received, one of the seven ballots he received was blank. So there's an assumption that that's an abstention, but wanting to have neat, tidy clarity, I thought perhaps it'd be a good idea to have a, an abstention option on the ballot. And then as long as I was into this, I really got deep and decided, well, what if everyone abstained? And therefore, we explicitly require that we continue with the process and, and that it would be okay to have a single nominee for a seat. Now, I'm not heavily invested into any of these amendments, but I am heavily invested into having clarity and certainty before we go into that meeting in May. So whatever it's gonna be, let's decide it, is my opinion, so that we don't have to have rulings from the chair on how to proceed during our organizational meeting. So I'll entertain any comments, suggestions. I can re, redraft this, um, for first reading at the next meeting. If there's no opinion to the contrary, we could present this for a vote and/or a possible amendment at the next meeting. As I said, I'm not invested in any particular outcome here, just so long as we have an outcome.
I have a question.
Yes.
What was the, I, I recall this and I recall. And what was the?
It was no fun.
Yeah, right, so I, I think this is a good idea. But what was the argument against reading out? There was something, can you help me?
I don't know that it was explicitly stated. I, I, I do believe that as, now, this is just my sort of hack, you know, human behavior theory here, that, that, you know, if, if, if someone, if one person, if there's two people nominated and, uh, one of them received four nominations and the other person received two, well, that sort of, could that influence the actual voting round? Well, maybe. Um, would, would somebody, um, be reluctant to nominate themselves? Uh, because if, if somebody received one, you know, nomination vote, would that, you know, sort of suggest that maybe somebody not, you know? You, you get into all these.
Right, right.
Mind games about, about that, 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 you know, we're seven adults, we can, we can deal with that stuff. Um, but it is, I think there is something to the idea that it's sort of a pre-vote on the vote. If there's a heavily weighted outcome in the nomination process. Another way to go would be to have, um, spoken nominations. Uh, my approach to this was to resist changing anything of significance. I think that would be a significant move. I didn't want to myself bring forth a cha- a proposal for what I would consider to be a significant change. I think that would be a big deal to move from an anonymous nomination paradigm to a spoken nomination paradigm. Now, we could, of course, the board could, you know, vote to amend this when it comes up for a decision and, and you, we do what we do. But as far as my proposal, I didn't want to propose anything that profoundly changed the paradigm. I just wanted to try to bring clarity to what we were going to do before we got to that meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Fee.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate the, um, sort of housekeeping aspect of this and, and certainly making the nomination section sort of mirror the election section. I do have concerns with stating the number of nominations because, uh, that it may influence the outcome of the voting. I would have to go back and look at all the tapes from the meetings, but I recall having done it some, some years, uh, where they were stated, the number. Dr. Erdl would read everyone as it came through. And so there wasn't a total given, but you could tally up if you wanted to. And then I remember years when it was just every time there's a new name, he would say the name. So I am not a reliable reporter on what our history is. I think, I think we've done it both ways. Um, but I do think that having a stated number of nominations for each person could have an impact on the voting. So I would like to keep that, just that these are the people who are nominated, uh, being stated without the number. But other than that, I'm fine with the modifications.
Now, it's my lay opinion that, and I, I suspect we'd all agree, that the count cannot be secret, that the count is a matter of public record.
Define the count.
Well, for the nomination, that, that there were, for example, seven ballots cast. Um, three, three states that have considered the question in, um, what would be municipal or local legislative body elections require that the, the ballot count match the number of people voting. There is a concern with potential for fraud if you allow the ballot count to be different than the number of people voting. So we have seven people voting, there are seven, um, seven nomination slips are handed in. Um, board member A gets five nominations, board member two, board member B gets two nominations, so it's five, two. Tell me if my interpretation is correct. You would prefer that the secretary not read the vote count.
That there are seven, we received seven nominations.
Yeah, that there are two, two, two board, I'm sorry, two board members nominated, but not speak out loud that the first board member got five nominations and the second board member got two nominations.
Correct, and we could go so far, I think, as to say, you know, if there were abstentions, then he, then the secretary could say there have been, there were.
That there were abstentions.
Five nominations and two abstentions and these members have been nominated.
Name the nominees and that there was an abstent, there, there was at least one abstention. All, all right. Now, but the, not but, the nomination ballots are retained by the district. They are public documents, they are open to public inspection.
Right.
So if someone wanted to come in and see what the count was, they are free to do that.
Correct.
But we wouldn't know if, and indeed, I suspect if a board member asked for the count during the meeting, would the board member receive the count during the meeting? You see, it gets, once you start to say explicitly that you're not gonna present information, I start to wonder about whether it's legal under our state law. I don't, I don't know, we haven't asked for legal opinions in this regard. But that's what I mean. The problem with not stating it is that if some people want it stated, now what do we do? Mrs. Randall.
I thought we had always stated it until last year.
We had.
Okay, and I don't recall why that changed. And honestly, when you're talking, this is seven people who are gonna be governing together. Um, I don't think it's harmful for everybody to know the names of the people. And you don't know who's voting for who. Um, but certainly in a spirit of, uh, cooperation and acting as one body, I, I find it kind of odd that we would not just say, Mrs. Real says three votes, Mr. Myers two votes, whatever the case could be.
That's votes, that's not nominations.
Either nominations or votes. I just, like, again, seven of us, it's not like a huge big deal. And again, we are gonna be working together under the leadership that we all decide on. So to me, that's, you know, I wouldn't, I'd prefer that we do announce all the counts. The other, um, thing I did wanna mention was the abstention. Um, I was surprised last year to hear that there was, um, a vote or a ballot that was not, um, filled in. And I guess, I looked at our other bylaws for our, our code of conduct type, type of thing. And, um, that does require that we vote on all issues unless a conflict exists. And so for me, you know, again, for these seven people to provide a, an option for somebody to abstain, I think is just not, not a healthy thing. You know, I mean. You know, I mean, you're selecting your officers for this group. And you can, you know, if you wanna vote for yourself rather than whoever, but that's my opinion.
Mrs. Fee, yes?
If I could on that point, the abstention option is only for the nominations. It doesn't say in the election section that there is an abstention.
I just don't see a reason for any kind of abstention.
A nomination isn't a vote, as far as I'm concerned, but I take your point.
Oh, well, the abstention option is stated in the ballots portion in the.
And you intend that to cover both?
That's my intention. My, my, my real intention is to be precise and have no ambiguity. So, the fact that you're asking this question leads me to believe that perhaps I'm not as precise as I was wanting to be. Now, to defend why we're having this discussion, the fact that we do have this disagreement or differing opinion from two board members tells me it's a good thing to decide this before we get to the organizational meeting, that whatever we're gonna do, that it's settled before then. And then, on another point, I always considered an abstention to be a vote, that, you know, yes, no, or abstain. There's, could be a reason why somebody would abstain. Philosophically, I suppose if perhaps some people wouldn't vote for themselves for a given officer, wouldn't nominate themselves for, I don't know.
Then you vote for somebody else.
Or you just don't.
You don't abstain.
Well, individual board member discretion. Is there any other board comment on this? Help us, please.
They're not gonna be here.
That's right.
This is what it means to be a lame duck in political parlance, that you have no, you know, no vested interest in the game anymore because you won't be there. Okay.
No, I just, no.
Yeah.
I just don't, I mean, either way, it wouldn't change how I vote, so therefore.
We won't attribute your non, no comment to lame duck status.
No, I'm no lame duck.
All right. That's a political term for somebody coming to.
I'm aware of the term.
Not everybody knows that. Is there any community comment? Well, okay.
All right, we have some, we have some candidates here.
Well, that's their discretion, whether, you know, I will consider this further. We don't have all seven board members here. We have a lot of time before the organizational meeting. We may bring this to a discussion again, unless we think that's completely unwise and frivolous and silly, that we should just bring it to a vote and be done with it, because really, what does it matter? I'm kind of inclined to think of it that way as well. All right. All right, thank you. So, we'll move to the next agenda item, please. School board candidates, Dr. Erdl.
The nomination papers are in. It sounds like a People's Choice Award.
Yeah.
And your word goes to. The nomination papers are in for school board seats four, five, six, and seven for the spring election on April first, two thousand and fourteen. Candidates in three seats will be running unopposed with Mary Jo Randall, seat four, Kristy Casey, seat five, and Sharon Mufeld, seat six. And there are two candidates for seat seven, Brian Bowden and Michael Hoytink.
Thank you, Dr. Erdl. I will put in my president's opinion here. It is in the public interest for the school district to make our facilities available for candidate forums. The school district has done that in the past. It was done in the last election, it was done in other elections. If there is any community group that would be interested in organizing and facilitating a candidate forum, please contact Dr. Erdl. That I feel would be a tremendous service to the community. Who sits on this board matters. There's thousands of children involved, a thousand employees, tens of millions of dollars. We have two candidates interested in the same seat. It's in the community interest to make information available to the voters. So, with that, I'll ask for public comment on non-agenda items. Seeing none. At this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the regular school board meeting to reconvene in conference room A for a board in-service. As this in-service is a working session of the board, no public comment will be entertained. May I have a motion, please?
No more.
Mr. Geroz, thank you.
Second.
Mrs. Randall, thank you. Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Geroz?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. We are adjourned into the in-service session. We'll take a ten-minute recess and meet in conference room A. Thank you.